I need to add a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Is that going to buy Lisa's favor?
Apologies for the delay.
Chair.
That was amazing.
There was just a little gap.
All right.
I don't even know if there's a...
I have.
How many of us are you going to...
I am.
I am dead. Or you can, I guess, get us out.
Oh, I got it.
I am shooting today.
I thought it was...
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 I am shooting today.
I need to add a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Is that going to buy Lisa's favor?
Apologies for the delay. Chair.
That was amazing. There was just a little gap.
All right.
Yeah.
All right.
Why don't we have a talk?
Come on down.
Nice.
Yeah.
We'll figure it out.
I can...
Okay. I don't even know if there's a...
I have.
How many of us are you going to...
What's fun?
I am. I am dead. Or you can, I guess, get us out.
Oh, I got it.
Sorry. Uh...
It's my song.
I am shooting today.
Is it my daughter? I was supposed to be. My daughter, Tess. I swear. Oh, she's one of the COVID people. Last week. And so, I was like, I...
That is quite a...
Very lovely. No. We're all married. Oh, I'm not worried about it. I've had it. I used to. I've been... Thank you. Yeah, my daughter. My son. God. Might as well sit together. Well, well, hers.
First meeting.
Or is there a deck? They're thinking of... Oh. Wow.
You guys have anything I can unplug temporarily?
Which documentary? There's a million songs on the backside. I don't think it's good.
These came out. If I got it, thank you.
I mean, I... I want to watch it with Hank. Every day. My World War II history. And I was confused two weeks ago. I'm done. Again. Okay. Well, I'm... Thank you. The next verse. Who's this? Yeah, so you go. Um, yes. He did 40 minutes at lunch talking. He was walking in closed quarters and discussing... I'm pretty sure that I keep... And he's... I just... Oh, he has... I just got this thing. Oh, my goodness. This is my favorite. Oh, this is my favorite. I love... I love this book. Definitely. Yeah. I hated this book. And then also, I hated it. I didn't have to read it. I didn't have to read it. Gosh, my teacher did a better job, I promise. I never had to read it. Instead of reading it, I went to writing in the 30s. Or for the years I decided, um... You know, like, I haven't read it. I should read it. Especially with these up here. I was like, I should have... Yeah. Can't plug it in there. Thanks. Hated it. Hated it. Hated it. Hated it. I did it. I did it. I did it. Okay, where are we going? So, we're Dresden. Hi, Rick. I'm giving out. Although, we're...
Hello.
How are you?
Uh... It's been a war for my...
Nice, congratulations. For just being amazing.
Suicide prevention.
Nice. That's great. You know, like shirts and shirts.
Let's find that.
Well, congratulations. Mateo just informed me he's... Whatever suicide prevention club is here. Yeah. 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 On the walls. He came home from whatever the sign-up day was. I think I overextended myself. No, we say... We're doing... No, I mean, he's definitely doing the suicide prevention. He did a whole bunch of...
They do the walk to Lebanon.
Yeah. Yeah. I think they're doing a lot of peer counseling stuff. That was he... That's what he was talking about, was they're trying to... They're trying to stop that. Up and running. Let me... You have... Meanwhile, we're going to... We did a kid and handout in person. Yeah. 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 I remember those. That went from, "I'm going to be home at 10:00." "I'm coming home hurrying." Leaving right now. Oh, welcome. Yeah. I know, I was like, Tony, I'm like, Tony, you weren't supposed to be here. I am. Yeah.
Yep.
Yes.
I can confirm, you said you were prepared to go to the council.
I just found out that the CPP means I have to do all the NEAs.
Kelly, is Kelly not doing council?
Kelly's class schedule changed.
Gotcha.
Kelly can't get there until 11:30.
Yeah, that's right.
Rick, I can go with that.
Between us, between us, we can make sure council's covered.
Kelly, you dropped another rock out of your pack.
Not my goal. I'm happy to shop until 11:30 to take over.
Deb and Lisa are gonna split it.
If somebody can go for the first 20 minutes.
Well, just do like a high five, all three of us. Between the, between the three of us will.
It's like the most fun of the show, right?
We'll go ahead and call the Dresden School Board regular meeting to order at 7:07. At this point, agenda review. Does anyone have anything they want added or removed from the agenda today?
Garrett does not hear it.
So we will, Robin, Garrett's email today about the COVID, are you gonna talk about that during the, okay, so that'll be, that'll be part of that discussion.
There was, yeah, we have a potential addition we'll talk about in non-public. We have an increased ESOL. Need to change that fee.
Okay. It's posted in the executive spot under, under.
Did someone send me an email that wanted something added to this little discussion?
I think that might be the same one, right?
Just the COVID, okay. Okay. At this point, public can they address the board. The chair will give members of the public three minutes each to comment on items not on the agenda. The board respectfully asks members of the public to state their name and address before commenting on, on their topic. Do you have anyone in the audience who wants to make a comment? Anyone online? At this point, we're gonna move on to the DMC presentation. Linda and Brian?
This is my first such presentation. Is this why I stand here?
Yeah, that's fine. Or you can sit if you'd like, just as long as we can hear you.
Brian, nice cape, the other day.
I'm recovering from my booster shot, so if you'll let me read my authorship statement, I apologize in the name. Thank you all for allowing us the chance to present our work to you. We know how full your agendas are and want you to know how much we appreciate your attention. In case we haven't met, my name is Brian Glenny, and I've been teaching Latin and English at Hannover High for 21 years. I became the World Languages Department Coordinator about 15 years ago when Deb Gillespie was up in council. And in that role, joined the Committee on Instruction, which is now called CPP. With that front row seat, I watched and learned how decision-making enhanced our life was shared with our staff and our students. That process wasn't always fast, nor was it always orderly, but most of the staff helped include it. During Justin Campbell's tenure as principal, changes were made to make the decision-making process more efficient. Unfortunately, those changes made decision-making considerably less democratic. Most of the staff felt excluded, morale suffered, trust was lost, and then came the pandemic. With new leadership in place, we took a close look at how we ended up where we are. The school's leadership team, CPP, established a committee to investigate the problem. Why were so many members of the HHS staff frustrated with the school's decision-making process? And what changes would we propose to address their concerns? For those of us on this newly formed decision-making committee, the past two years felt a bit like a recompeting of a constitutional convention. A system of government governance is laid down and approved by the people, and then future generations make adjustments as needed, uphold in core values while fixing glitches and improving processes. Guided by the core values of this democratic school, hearts, minds, and voices, we asked the big question, what would school governance look like if we could design it from scratch? Our presentation details how our work proceeded and lays out the five motions or articles that the Hannover High staff has approved. Some have been concerned that these changes would diminish the power and effectiveness of the high school's principal. We understand the concern, but we would argue that these changes provide more clarity, structure, and protection for the principal. These changes don't take away a principal's authority to do what needs to be done. What they do is remind us, remind us all of how important our core values are, not only in our interactions with our students, but also in our interactions with one another. In presenting these five motions to you, it's our goal to win your formal approval of the changes they outline and thereby to make those changes efficient. We would then include them in the Hannover High School handbook. If I may, I'd like to conclude with three final points. One, we'd like you to know that the Hannover High School staff had many opportunities to head in a more radical direction. That at each of those moments, they overwhelmingly chose a more measured, modest solution. Number two, we'd also like you to know how integral our principals, Jim Logan and Julie Stevenson, have been in helping this work succeed. Their thoughtful questions and guidance showcased our mission and statements' values from start to finish. And number three, when I arrived at Hannover High all those years ago, I remember, I remember wondering what people meant when they described Hannover High as a democratic school. To be honest, the whole experiment felt a bit risky. All those years later, I consider competence, it has been and continues to be up for this. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. So are we, the board is being requested to approve this? Is that, is that something that we need to do? It's not on our, it's not in our approval?
Part, I mean, that is, Linda Dante and I, we're one of the present decision-making committee, I, we talked about it. And I'm frankly, just as council's position in the school decision-making was codified and has kept that body in good standing, you know, as administrations have changed, I think our work was hoping that this effort to codify these motions would make it so that new administrators coming in wouldn't be left with, you know, how do we do this here? So I don't know, we're kind of laying it at the board's feet as far as what you think would be the best step. Obviously, our next step, if we get just a head nod from you, would be to go back, and as Jessica Ekin reminded us, get it in the handbook so that future staff members and students and everybody know this. But again, that idea of having it someplace, you know, I think at one point we've done that for COI, we never did it, we never did it for CPP. So that place where it could live, it has the board's support. Is it a policy level? Again, I leave that, leave that to your discretion, but something that would stand the test of time. And if it did need to be changed, as Bob McCarthy said tonight, we were talking about council, it would require a public meeting so that it wouldn't just be, you know, sort of mission drift, it would take a conversation.
Jay, we have existing, existing Dresden policy, as Linda alluded to, and I think this is something that, our, our policy committee right now is an SAS Youth Policy Committee, but I, I do think that you should consider it in the context of the Daphne policy.
So do anyone have any questions?
Yes.
Can I ask a few about that? So can Julie speak to, do you mind speaking to your thoughts? Speak to this, on your opinion for these changes to the decision-making process?
Are you in favor? I'm in favor of them. I feel like it's really clear. There are people who have looked over and say, well, this might seem odd, you don't seem to have a lot of power in the system, and I think you have a lot of power if you follow the process. You know, much like our government, right? If you follow the part, you have to follow the process. The process is really clear. If you follow the process, no one can question it because it's really clear what it should be. We've been under this, you know, been operating under it for the last year or so, and decisions have been made, the school has moved forward. There was one decision that was made by one group that we talked about overriding the decision of that group, the coordinators group. But then that sort of stalled in the staff meeting for a little bit, and we're working on a new procedure instead of doing the override. But I feel like everyone's really clear on where their voice can be heard, and so it almost takes wind out of the sails. Conspiracy theorists, I suppose, right? Because it's, here's the process, follow the process. We have a voice, use it. Versus, you know, feeling like you don't have any power and you can't have your voice heard.
I had some question or concerns about the time. Have you given a response of like 10 days to turn around your decision? If you decide to veto anything, is that, are you okay with the timeline or anything? And then, thank you. The other part is, and I just didn't understand, but Brian, if you can, there's one aspect that says if the, if Julie, the principal, vetoed, you override, if the two sides vote, and it goes to superintendent, but I didn't see what happened. So superintendent says no, then is it over?
And, and I would just clarify, the override, I think we changed the wording there, so if we can't override the principal's vote, we just appeal it to the superintendent. Superintendent's decision is followed.
I just went back to the council's recommendation. Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a view as well. So kind of maybe picking Becky on that, it also says that the board has the ability to veto, and I just wanted to.
I saw that.
In the order of operations, I guess, when, and we have a 10-day timeline, we usually meet once a month, I just, I just wanted to bring up that question. When does the board get involved or?
Where is that the language? Is that, I saw it earlier.
Yeah, good question. I'm looking at something else.
What, what are the motions?
See, because it's his decisions here, it says, so it's on page five of the motion. CPP is a deliberative body whose decisions are binding on the school, subject only to the veto of the principal, superintendent, or school board. And it says here that the principal has 10 days, and then it appeals to superintendent, but then.
It doesn't talk about us.
Yeah, which, I mean, I presume, I guess we could always veto, I don't know, I just, it's silent, so I just wanted to clarify.
Was that the original language, but now it's not, it's OBE?
I believe that was the original language in the CPP that we did not change. So that, that's not anything we introduced. That already is on the book.
Yes. Is that potentially a sort of a reflection of the process that we use in regard to jurisdiction of council? So if it's, if it's a matter that is under the purview of the board, the board then has veto power?
Yeah, yeah. Some of this language was modeled off of what you see in the council bylaws as far as a process for, you know, and then at what point it gets bumped up, you know, to other sort of powers.
So my assumption would be then, that if I, if something came to me and I realized it was governed by board policy, that would, to me, be a board matter to progress. That I couldn't single-handedly.
And we're not, we're not constrained by the 10 days. Lisa?
Just on that point, it, it might help to add like a line of language about that, to make it clear. Because otherwise, it does get a little confusing, like when does the board step in and?
What was the form of the thing? It says you're 50% of staff, but what is staff, is that certified teachers?
We define that in.
We wrestle with this. We spend a lot of time discussing it. Can you define it? I'm just trying to remember where it is. On page one, paragraph three. The staff of consistent Hannover High School's administrators, coordinators, teachers, counselors, administrative and educational assistants and nurses. And from time to time, we may vote to include a wider, a wider circle. And would then include part-timers as well? Yes. If they're part-time in one of these categories. I might read it, but then the principal would be a voting member, correct? Do you participate in voting these things as appropriate? Can I speak to that? Yeah. We, we believe in many, the many hats this of all our jobs. So I'm a coordinator and a teacher. I vote in the coordinators group and on CPP and at staff. But when I'm in coordinators group or on CPP, I'm not voting for myself, I'm voting for another department. But I'm in a staff vote according to what I saw. And we have these multiple, you're still only voting one time, right?
Totally, that often.
Ever since 2004, CPP.
Neil. So I guess the, the top of this actually is, if, if we're going to sort of codify this as how we want to move forward, I think the benefit that we've got with our current relationship to council is that's actually established in policy. Right? And so I really think that if the board's gonna give a, a head nod or an approval to something like this, the way that that manifests itself is through a new policy that says that this is how we're gonna operate. The bigger question that I have, which maybe is probably not an answer for tonight, right, is I, I mean, I've been on the board for a while. I have not been around as long as Brian has, 20 years, right? And so I know that when I came in, it was right at the tail end of Deb Gillespie's run. I'm curious how much of this structure was in place back then and actually being used versus the language that I'm seeing here tonight is, is new. I mean, if we say we've always been a democratic school, what, what did it look like previously? Why wasn't it previously codified in board policy? And, and how did we end up in the position that we're at today?
May I speak to that?
And so I, I knew that that was a big question. I'll defer to the chair as to whether or not we want to entertain it. We'd love to get a history lesson.
I'll be brief. When, when Deb Gillespie was principal, and this has everything to do with council. When council was moving forward some issue and came to a conclusion they wanted to make some change, they'd bring their approved motion to Deb, and then if it affected us in any way, she would bring it to the staff. She would want to staff this question on it. She would still be the ultimate decision-maker whether to approve or veto the motion, but she would check in with us. I'm sure there were some that didn't involve us, but she always erred on the side of getting feedback from the adults in there. And, and those, those input feedback sessions were sometimes really productive and effective. Sometimes, goosey goosey, sometimes some people monopolized the airtime. It wasn't always the best managed meeting. But when that went away, when we were told staff meetings will no longer be a time where we consider what's going on in council. In fact, staff meetings will no longer be a time when we make decisions on anything. That felt like a big change. And, and so we didn't know what we had lost to the last year.
I can speak to that if the council executive, council can't reach its fullest potential if the voices in the school are unempowered. And that just doesn't include students, it includes staff. And again, back to Bob McCarthy, you know, it all starts with a conversation. So if staff is feeling that they don't have a place to enter this conversation, then council can't work. So this is even, this is not a threat to council, this is in fact part of what council needs to work.
And then I would just say, I would just add that, I think March of 2020 to June of 2020 brought it to a head because decisions had to be made quickly about things that we were doing the following year in case we remote the whole year and we made some decisions without that. And we had to make them quickly. And I think what happened was the fear crept in of, well, you did it then, and you do it again, and nothing's written down. So the way we've been used to operating could go away if somebody came in and didn't understand our school and decided to run away with it. So I think part of it was, you know, was realizing with change of leadership, you could end up having change of how you operate, and people wanted to have it written down, and that made it really clear that, and, and a principal who came in as an interim, she was like, how does this place operate? I have no idea, and there's nothing written down. And so let's write it down, kind of.
So Kim and then Jake.
Yeah, so I have a couple more, so feel free to cut me off, I guess. One kind of question I had was about the membership and how, so what I understood here, this would be following public meeting, open public meeting law, and that we would have to, because we have a school board member on this as membership. So when we're talking about what's quorum and what, everything, I just, I wanted to highlight that, that that's what I think was being proposed, right? Okay.
May I ask, are you talking about a staff meeting or CPP?
CPP.
Okay.
CPP following, and I believe it should already, but I don't know when the last time it's met, and yes, or no. So I just wanted to clarify that. But I also found it interesting, and I don't know what the current CPP is, so sorry for my lack of knowledge there, but is that the Dresden School Board has one member on it, which is non-voting.
Right.
But we have two community members who are voting, which are not elected by the public and, and may or may not have as much subject matter knowledge because they, you know, there's a lot that we all learn as we serve. So it just, that part, and that community member is, is appointed by the principal, which I didn't, you know, anticipate any, a little by those who are offering to serve, it just, the membership seemed a bit odd, and then the open public meeting law seemed a bit willy for, for just practical reasons.
I think the history, if I can give you that piece of my understanding of it, is it's slightly tit for tat, which is, there's a student on the school board who's not a voting member, and so CPP put a board member on CPP if it's not a voting member. I think that was sort of the, my understanding from what we've been.
No, that, that is.
Like, and what is how that happened, right?
It's, it's also very old. This is not new. Just from the last, you know, two years of work we did, so much of that part of this whole proposal is what we've inherited from how CPP's been operated. So we didn't make changes.
It wasn't CPP before, it was COI. So this is actually historically, you know, Committee on Instruction, which goes way back to the beginning when council was entered, when it applied to reduce form to the festival. So that's how old it is in the story.
So in further answer to Neil's question, the number one, I agree totally that we should have a new policy. And that policy, really, if we, if we entertain this decision-making process, we're really bringing all these things together that now live in, in unjoined policies. So we have a policy on COI, we have a policy on coordinators, and, and we have our policy regarding council. So I think, I think if we, if we're able to codify this, it'll be a good step and maybe prevent people from showing up as interim principals like Jim Logan did and wondering how the heck to make decisions.
So would we take the policy that the student council has and just?
Council.
Council.
Thank you.
And tweak it for the policy committee just?
I, I would not see these as linked. I see that policy as done. And this is a policy that now talks about another sort of decision-making process that involves staff and has parts to it. So that's, that's the way I think, right, I would say, we, I was thinking of it.
Can I say?
No, we may not even agree on this, because I don't want to be talking about this.
Well, I, I don't have the council policy in front of me, but if there was anything in the council policies that said council was the only decision-making body in Hannover High School, we would want that to be.
And, and Brian speaks to this because I think when you read the policy, some people do read it as it is the apex of the triangle when it comes to decision-making. And I know in those early descriptors, it was seen as a representative body of students and staff. And I think this now says there is a representative body of staff in a staff leader. So to that extent, again, policy committee, up and down.
So, granted.
I was just gonna say, I, I didn't intend to suggest that we would combine all of these into a single policy, but they certainly should all be referenced within a single policy, so that when someone pulls up, we often have cross-references to other policies. There should be some wording in it that speaks on behalf of the board that we understand decision-making in Hannover High School is governed by these three disparate policies or distinct policies, I should say.
Yeah, so I think, I, I think that we do need to entertain policy for this, and I guess what I'm gonna advocate for is that I, I, not that I'm gonna encourage a slow approach, but I do think that this needs some thought, right? Because I think what, what I heard, and others might have heard this, but what I heard was that the previous practice was, in, in my mind, a leadership-style approach. What we're talking about here is actually codifying it as a more directive, like this is how things work, right? And in my mind, that's a, that's a very different animal. And I want to make sure that we, as a board, think this through to understand where, how does this operate, where are the checks and balances? What do they have purview over? What does the board have purview over? What does the superintendent have purview over? And make sure that it works well with council. And I also want to recognize at the same time that we're talking about instituting this at one out of our core schools. And, and if, if that's our intent, I want to make sure that we're all conscious of that, and we're doing it purposefully, right? And, and the thing is true. I say that because what I don't want to, what I'm suggesting doesn't happen, is that we rubber stamp what's come through this evening, give it to the policy committee that says, just make this into a policy and then call it done.
Yeah, I mean, and actually Neil kind of touched a lot about what I was gonna turn into a question, but thank you. I appreciate those comments echoing a lot of that. I think what would be helpful and not maybe for right now, because clearly we're gonna have more conversation, but kind of, you know, there's a note in the slide deck saying, not all decisions can be made democratically, but if they can be made democratically. And I guess I was trying to think of the decisions that could not be made democratically. And if we could think about what, you know, the purview of this committee versus others kind of deal with, I think that would be really helpful too to making us all have an idea of what's on there.
I'm also, we need some help on the clarity component, and I'm gonna go back to Kim's previous comment about, is this intended to be a public meeting? Or is it more of a public-style meeting? Like, could a member of the public come into this meeting and?
Or you can watch CPP.
Or CP.
It's an open meeting.
Okay, so.
I'm not sure, I understand the difference, but people are welcome to help.
And that means anyone off the street. Okay. So then.
It's public.
Right, which means so public should then be able to have the right to comment. And also, why would names be omitted in the meeting minutes?
That's staff.
So that that's not CPP, so that that's not CPP?
No, no, staff meetings are for staff members. And CPP is a public meeting that happens, again, as a smaller group that has more, like, a different range of decision-making. And that is broadly open. In fact, we try to get people there. And we do talk in committee, because I actually brought up what the board says about, you know, you can speak now unless it's on the agenda and if we hold your comments as a model for CPP to consider in the event, because sometimes they do get community members there and students who are, you know, coming in and want to listen and also follow. So that's the intent of CPP to have that open.
So then names will be in the minutes?
In CPP, I don't know what, we don't usually, we just try, we actually have them in a happening in the moment. Don't put name. In staff, it was specifically requested that names not be there. Again, for personal reasons, yeah. But that's a, that's really a closed meeting.
You don't often put names with board discussion either. We just say there was discussion about, and anyone wants.
It kind of depends on the note paper for that one.
Well, that's. Possibly true.
Almost line by line.
Possibly true. I was gonna say, first off, so full disclosure, this, a lot of these conversations happened, but I was actually on staff last fall. And so I was able to sort of see the process. And I did just want to applaud, as we're discussing this, I think it's more the board questions, but I did want to take a second to applaud the process, which was very thorough. And I think, as usual, you guys crossed all the Ts and dotted all the Is and got buy-in on the staff. And I think that was a wonderful process. I think, I would echo just the the thought about, does this require, I mean, can we have this codified and written down from the high school without making it a board-level policy? And and I guess my, I think Neil really made me think about this when he said, we don't have this for other schools. And it got me thinking, do we want to have that for other schools? Do we want, as a board, to have some sort of policy about how schools are governing themselves? And I don't, I don't know that we necessarily do want that, right? I don't know if we want our fingers in that tie, so to speak. So that's, that would be my reservation, but with full applause for how you guys have done about that.
One more comment, and then we're gonna go through the discussions.
Thank you, dear. On that note, it sounds like you do have policies about some things that exist at Hanover High, but not at the other schools. Right, because someone already mentioned there's a CPP policy, a council policy. So I think there's precedent for creating policies that's only, that's this is a the only one in school. We certainly aren't trying to solve a district-wide issue.
So at this point, we'll get the head nod to continue and pass this off to the policy committee to start.
We might not like this, but I actually think where it better sits is strategic planning governance.
Oh, thanks.
The one that you had up.
No, I know, but it's not. It's not strategy and it's focused on the high school formally, so. Well, I think that there's a decision or a discussion to be had there is if you want this, this, this idea to filter down to all the schools, right?
Yes, Kim.
Well, we already have a CPP and we have a board member liaison to it. And I believe that the CPP might want to convene and think about what they want to propose, given some feedback that they have tonight. I mean, I don't know if the initial step has to go to policy, but it might be. I just wonder if someone wants, if they want to take the first shot at it, I would have thought, before going.
Well, I think Neil brings strategy and governance, but so do I have a sense that we want the, this to be a SAU-wide model?
Why not?
Jay?
I would say because the high school specifically agreed to become a democratic high school. We didn't decide to become a democratic SAU. Specifically, an experiment that began at the high school for high school governance and to engage students of that age and helping to determine those things that are not governed by board jurisdiction, not necessarily the province of administration, but open to decision-making outside of things that are already established in existing policy and law. And so I still think, and I agree with what Brian just observed, is that we do have very specific Dresden policy that applies only to the high school. We even have a policy regarding coordinators that establishes this thing called a coordinator with with some supervisory authority that that the middle school has chosen not to use. So there's, there's, I think there is precedent for having targeted policy.
Yeah, completely agree. There is precedent for having targeted policy. But in my mind, when I look at somebody mentioning that Hanover High School is a democratic school, I think that that is almost entirely localized council. What we're talking about here is establishing a structure by which faculty and staff have a role in the decision-making process. If you were telling me that the discussion was whether or not we introduce council at all of our other schools, I would agree with you. That's not where we want to go, but what we're talking about here is setting up a structure by which faculty have a, have a very strong democratic role in the decision-making process of what goes on in that building. And that, to me, is very different.
Tim.
I was gonna say, but I think one of the pillars of that democratic process is council. One of the pillars of the, of the decision-making process at the high school is council, which we're lacking at the other schools. And I think, I mean, developmentally, I don't think that we're there at that point where we can have six, seventh, and eighth graders fulfilling the same role as council as at the high school. So I think that, from my standpoint, it's okay for it to be targeted. I don't think that it's something that should be spread out just because we, you're gonna have sort of three pillars there. We're lacking a pillar of council at the other three schools.
I was just gonna echo Neil a little bit and say, my only reservation again is that I don't think our other schools have a staff that is not making decisions in some democratic fashion. I think staff has plenty of input at the other schools. It's just not laid out in such a way, which is great, and they're doing a great job, right? So I don't, that's my reservation, is whether we want to be involved in defining that process.
So let's go back to next steps. So is it being put to the strategy group for governance admission? Okay.
I mean, the other option could be one, to avoid it at a board level, would be to put it in our school handbook. And then the board approves the handbook at the end of the year. And so then at least you're aware of it and it's in our handbook. And then if something happens and we don't believe in democracy or whatever someday, like, the board could say, we prefer authoritarian leadership, we want to be able to hire someone that way, and that's, and we need you to change the handbook, right? Like, and it's not something you're supposed to. I don't know. Right. I don't know. But if we could do it that way, and the board does approve our handbook, right? And so there's some level of approval there, and then the policy committees can deal with all the other things your policy committees need to deal with.
So what do we, what do Jay, Jamie and I, let's mull on it, shoot on it, and then we'll come back to the next steps.
In your roles, because you do.
To be clear, I offered to be on that committee. It's not like I'm trying to not do any of the work, right? I, I offered to be on that committee. I have yet to receive an invitation to a meeting. Well, we haven't, we haven't had one. That's my point.
We have had meetings.
We've had meetings, but we're waiting for the other groups to get done with what they're working on.
Maybe so a lot of meetings, oh, all different things.
I'm willing to put in the effort.
Okay. Thank you, Neil. Okay, so. We're moving on to reports now.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys.
A lot of great work.
Feel better, Mr. Plonin.
Hi, yes, okay. So council report is also quick like it was last month. So we have club allocations to kickstart the year. There was some debate about how much money should be given and to whom it should be given, but I think most allocations were passed. Also, there will be senior and staff elections to fill the remaining spots on council. And we're actually also looking for some community members to be on council, so please consider that if you would like to do that. Also, OAC will be running elections for the Examining Equity Committee. I think in the bylaws, the latest time they will do that is the second week of October. And yeah, that's it so far. We'll be discussing more interesting things as the school year progresses, but right now it's just sort of introductory school things. That's it.
Thank you, Lisa.
And Vedusha, you might just want to remind people what OAC is.
Yeah, OAC is one of the, OAC is one of the council committees, standing council committees. It stands for organizational and engineering, and it's just looking at the functioning of council and how it's running. So they run elections. That's one really big responsibility that they have.
Thank you.
Vedusha, Jay just pointed out that you were selected as the high school student of the year. Congratulations. By the state, too.
Yeah, by the state.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
I just, Vedusha, I just wanted to, it's Kelly McConnell. I just wanted to apologize to you and the council for not being at the initial meetings. Unfortunately, my schedule has changed, so I cannot attend the council meetings as the board representative. So we are finding a replacement situation, but I just wanted to apologize to you guys for not being there.
Okay, thank you for letting us know and no worries at all.
Great. Moving on, Hanover High School report.
So we're in the middle of a MIASC, which is New England Association of Schools and Colleges process. And we're in the self-study process, and we would love board participation. Deb is part of that by force because CPP is one of the committees, is serving as one of the committees. But if anyone wants to come not forced, we would like to have more board participation for that. So we're in the middle of that process.
So when is?
So the meeting times would be Mondays after school once a month. So do you remember that the first Monday?
It's the, it's the third Tuesday and the, and the fourth Monday.
Fourth Monday after school and the third Tuesday, the Tuesday is from 12 to 12:40.
Could you send an email to all the board members with the location time of day?
Yep, and even if you can come to one and not the other, that would be fine, too, in terms of that. And then instructional coaching is going well at the high school. Sally Hare, who's doing that, is pretty much full. And she's trying to make sure she takes on other people who really want to do it, but her time is is full with teachers who are volunteering to do the instructional coaching. The media and tech area, the wiring, is keeping us really busy in terms of our projectors. And Robin's been really good at helping us find other forms of funding to, we're needing to change the projection over more rapidly than we imagined. And so Robin's been helping in terms of that. Really proud of the number of students participating in athletics as well as the performing arts. Happy that some of the participation is being tracked, much like what Vegan wrote in terms of who's participating or not, because I think that's gonna give us a sense of where we need to head and what we need to push more to improve. And we're 2022 National Blue Ribbon School, and that's pretty exciting. Well, we're gonna go pick up the banner in DC, Jay, Julie, Jessica, in November, and we'll hang it somewhere prominently in the school. And I know we have to figure out, I'm thinking about what you sent. I know we probably should figure out some sort of unveiling of the banner or some, some thing or other. Party planning is not my strength. I like going to them. So we'll try to figure that out.
I still want to hear the comment about the mascot. So has that been turned over to a professional designer?
Yes, and so we have, we have pieces of it that are, you know, professionally done. And we have a whole process of, so because we're trying to get everyone, instead of what we used to have with just the clip-art mascot, we want everyone to use the same one. And so that's been created and we've unveiled it, and it's being used on all kinds of different things. I have it on my backpack, if you want to see it later.
So I will also note the Blue Ribbon Ceremony in DC, Jay, Julie, and Jessica.
I'm Jaclyn.
And the Chair Johnson.
Or the SAU Chair Jaclyn.
You let us know. We'll, we'll have you tell.
Might as well rent a Boston center.
Congratulations again. Tim?
Oh, yeah.
Julie, on the instructional coaching, can you remind me, is that just a position for this year or?
So right now, it's a position we took in certain areas where we felt like class size was a little bit lower and we could handle the class size being a little bit higher. We took those positions and shifted them into instructional coaching to try that out. If we can do a similar, like, shift next year, we would continue to do it. We didn't say whether it was a year or whether it was beyond a year. If it's really, really useful and we can figure out a way to make it happen, then we're gonna try to keep doing it. We were in an eval committee meeting today, Jay was and Robin and some people from the schools. And coaching is written into that evaluation system. And so it seems like it would be a good idea to pursue it if it's useful. And so I'm glad we're doing this to get a sense of, is it useful and will teachers actually sign up for it? But so far, a few teachers have come in who've started the whole process with Sally and said, you know, I wasn't really a believer, but really, like, I'm tackling something I wouldn't normally tackle, and I'm really excited about it. So I'm excited that she's doing it and we're able to massage the questions in the background.
So it's not technically a revision for the budget this year, so at least I can be codified, I think, the budget this year, because that's a lot.
Right, if I, if I could, if it turns out that way.
Maybe you'll have an assessment.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Ben?
Oh, sorry.
I like seeing the numbers on the athletics update, like the percentages and lots of. We're gonna make a little one next time for the performing arts and all other indicators that aren't sports.
Yeah, I could, I don't know about all.
As much as actual council.
Right, I can try to get the footlighters, which would be the equivalent in performing arts area, could do that. We can try, we can try to see how many people, because we have tons of activities. And so, you know, trying to gather all that information, like.
And then we'll be going for a speed.
Yes.
Performing arts, a lot of the kids do several different, like, they're in the jazz band and they're in the.
Right, right.
So that would be.
That's still the essence. It's a double triple coverage.
Particularly, just to tag on to that, I think with the pandemic, I know we see numbers, especially in performing arts. Yeah. Decline, and so it would be good to kind of track that over time, I agree.
Jim?
All right, so I'll just highlight a couple of things from what I have written down. All right, so I'll just highlight a couple of things from what I have written down. The beginning of the year has been fantastic. It's been, everybody had said it's a much more normal year, which is nice for everyone. One of the big things that's new this year is our plus classes, which have been met with a great deal of enthusiasm, both by staff and by students. So we have a couple number of things. We have a couple, one, unforeseen outgrowth of this is that you notice that what we're trying to do this year is to make sure that students don't use their devices between classes. We try to couch this as a health issue, not as anything else, but we really need to stay off social media. The problem is that some of the students in the financial literacy class are checking their stocks between classes. We sort of thought that that was unforeseen, but that's okay, so we're trying to have them wait and check them during their classes. Mike Lapine wanted me to pass along the steamboats that he had built out of basically cardboard boxes, straw and pieces of old soda cans that we put together and make a working steam engine out of. About half, half of them worked, which they're called butt boats, and they actually do butt up across the water. It's pretty amazing. He thinks this is that great is in terms of building and design, so the students who it didn't work for, now they have a better plan as to what they're supposed to do best going forward. Trying to think of everything else. I'm looking forward to all of the rockets that we're going to be building in the eighth grade. Having fun trying to do puzzles on an eighth grade map. Not very good. I'm okay at the Rebus's, but the other logic puzzles. The kids laughing, maybe they're not so good at that. We did have our first non-walking field trip, trying to film the seventh grade. They all walked up Pulse Legend down, which is fantastic. Probably helped by the fact that all of our teachers in the seventh grade are incredibly fit. Tried chasing Dorcas down our tug up and down, which is a little bit difficult. Yeah, and so other than that, we have sort of had a pretty smooth beginning of the year. We do have one new student group, student-led affinity group, called Students of Color and Night. Two of our eighth grade students came and said that they thought they would like to have a space for students and staff, just to be able to meet and talk. They're trying to try to figure out exactly what it is that they want to do, but they wanted to have a group first, so we set that up in the next class. Wednesday was very successful, so. Yeah, I'm in the process of planning a lot of, trying to get more parents back in the building. We had a pretty informal open school night, allowing parents to come back sort of when they wanted. We're going away from presentation. We'll do a presentation of curriculum after Indigenous Peoples' Day. We'll do that virtually. Curriculum is something that's better to be done, I think, at your own pace online, which is what we've done in the past. But other than that, we're hoping to get more people into the building. We have a lot more volunteers who are, who are coming in, and we welcome anybody to come by. And the building is still in great shape. I'll just say again, our custodial staff is amazing. They spent, we had for, for open school night, we followed what I call the thirteen-year-old boy method of cleaning, which was we took all the extra stuff and we put it in the auditorium and they closed the door, so no one could see it. And then this past weekend, they went back and cleaned it all out and put it back in our storage areas. And we actually got rid of, donated, Janice Starkey took the lead on that and donated a lot of our old equipment that we weren't using anymore, giant tables, which weighed about seven thousand pounds, so you couldn't do anything with it. But we've donated those throughout the other year, so that was nice. Please come by, visit, building's open, lunch is good. Robin will back me up on that and Jay, woodworking is fun. Jay will back me up on that as well. And they're always sort of fun things going, so you're welcome.
Moving on to business requiring discussion, so budget timeline and finalizing the budget guidelines. What did Jamie go with?
Sure. This is the second reading, so I will be very brief. Nothing has changed from what it was presented last month, so you can kind of see what you've already seen.
Thank you, Kim.
You're welcome.
It's a second reading, but there's one thing we fixed in the.
Oh, yes, sorry. Yes, thank you for reminding me. That felt so long ago. Yeah, so the Norwich budget, so the enactment of the Norwich, well, Vermont People Waiting Study, which will have an impact on Norwich taxpayers, won't occur in this upcoming budget cycle that we're preparing, but in what time next year. So we have basically one more year before the law takes an effect, even though it passed this summer. So that was just a clarification.
So would the body need to be changed this year?
Uh, yes. So it, so it's down at the bottom, it's for Norwich taxpayers. It says, uh, bottom of page one, the last paragraph, for Norwich taxpayers for twenty-three, twenty-four budget cycle, it should say twenty-four.
So was that a change, what's it, or was it?
No, it was just a clarification as we're learning what this new bill means. We've learned new things. So, and we had also talked about it in the Hanover meeting, so that's also why I'm having to do that.
Of course, I think we do this. From Hanover Dresden tuition, does that, Jamie?
Yep, um, yes. Let me just make a note, change that before we perform. So later today, I posted a copy without the student names of our current enroll leads for tuition, and we're down, we're down a lot. So that being said, don't be too alarmed.
Where did you post it?
Yeah, it's not in there. I just hit refresh.
You may have put it in there, because that.
No, it's not.
No, okay. Okay, hold on. I will post it. I might have gotten interrupted on that one. Got it all ready and nice for you. I'll post it, hold on. Oh, there you go. Sorry about that. I'm gonna post it now. So, so I hid all the students' names. But this is how we track it, in the Financial Services Manager tracks it, along with folks from both the Ridgeham Middle School and the Hanover High School. And, you know, they update it usually monthly because students come and go off. We are down a lot of FTEs on, in the Vermont, out of, out of state line. It's down considerably, and I don't have the answer for why. I've not had a chance to follow up with the folks at the high school or in the guidance to see if we've got any idea of why our numbers in Heartland specifically have really dropped off considerably. We usually would, I wanted to do like a three or four year look back to see what the numbers have been. And it's not, I don't know that Act forty-six has, has affected Heartland because they still have true choice of all of them. It did affect some of the numbers coming out of Ranger, but we took some of that into consideration based on, you know, what we pushed forward from last year. And only use the ones that had already been approved before that change, the Act forty-six was made. I'm concerned about this, and so we're going to do some, I spoke to Jay about it a couple different times. And can you hear me? I'm sorry, I'm doing my voice, it is in my, my butt over there to the middle of my.
Yeah, we're just following you again.
Oh, it is?
And knows you're talking, so it must be getting something.
It's lucky, that'd be it. And so we're gonna have conversations with the guidance folks and Julie to see, we used to before COVID, right, BC? Go out and aggressively court, if you will, eighth graders from the other sending school districts. You know, and share information with them. And I think probably because of the pandemic and us not being able to go in and into the other schools, you know, a lot of that winged off, and it could be part of that is part of what we're seeing because, you know, they don't know what we have to offer perhaps. I don't know what any of the other answers are because we still send a bus to and from Heartland. And the deal that I remember being made was that, prior to me coming here, it was my first year here, was that we needed to maintain twenty students coming out of Heartland in order to send a bus back and forth. So it needs to be a serious conversation for next year's budget with folks both here for high school and with Heartland. Sending buses is very expensive, and so, you know, we still send buses back and forth along. And we let anybody in the Heartland area, if it's, you know, because West Windsor folks used to drive up to the Heartland school to catch their buses all the time, and they've not been using the bus much more recently. And I'm sure some of it has to do with timing, but we don't have a ton of additional drivers. Some of us finished one thing. So there's also, if you look through here, there's highlights, and so I've adjusted FTEs because some of the half costs, some of the half costs are because of vocational. So if a student attends vocational in, in, they pay directly to the vocational center. We don't, it doesn't filters through our books, okay? So if they go to the vocational center, they only pay half the tuition to, to us. So when you go down to the very bottom, it shows you what the budgeted dollar amounts are and what the difference is. We will make these, we do not set tax rates and revenues in the state of New Hampshire for New Hampshire school districts until October, late October, early November. So we'll continue to monitor this and adjust for any other families coming in and or leaving. We'll also update our other revenues to see where it comes out, and we'll make adjustments accordingly so that we don't purposely shorten the school district of financial cash flow. For my Hanover board members, please don't be too alarmed. We have a very large surplus coming off of the Hanover school district that will more than cover what the difference is when I ran the numbers. So I took and ran the percentages and brought it back out to the two districts, and when I ran the numbers, the Hanover tax rate will be up. It will still be lower than what we had projected. And that's taking into consideration retainage. On the Norwich side, it's a little more tricky because we've already set budget there. So I have a conversation going on about how we'll treat that because we do also have surplus in Norwich that can cover the difference. When we had tuitions that were much higher when I first got here, we used to adjust, and then each of the school districts paying in would have surpluses from that, and then we'd keep them in our own districts. So this is just the first year it's been reversed. Last year, we let it run in deficit, and we absorbed it, as you'll see a little bit later on in my report. So last year, the revenues were off and we absorbed it through surplus. It doesn't leave us a lot of money, however, if we do it that way to do any retainage. Okay, I do not have the audit, the early audit back on Dresden. I've asked for it before the end of this week because I want to finalize the AOE twenty-five forms. So I'll have a better idea of whether my numbers on what I projected as surplus on Dresden, which is about fifty grand, is true or not. Dresden had a rough year this year because we, dynamics going opposite directions, right? We were low on revenues, and we were, ooh, I'm sorry, and we were way over at Ridgeham Middle School on people's elections for health insurance and, and those changes, which we had reported on earlier in the year. So however, the high school was way down on their expenditures, so they kind of absorbed it. So happy to answer any questions.
So if we're gonna start going out and marketing again, the Blue Ribbon needs to be.
Beautiful thing.
Yeah, so let's make sure that we're hitting it fast and early while people are trying to make decisions instead of waiting until this, or this, but.
And I think just from like data collection, if we can figure out how many students there are in each of, like, you know, Sharon, the Heartland.
The other teams, Tim, yes.
Yeah, just total, because if we're capturing, so thirteen from Heartland or choosing, right? But having, is the class only thirteen or is the class six, you know? So I just, I think.
What was the size?
The percentages are really helpful to understand, like, if there is declining interest or there's just declining numbers. And I say Heartland specifically because I happened to watch a Heartland school board meeting recently, and I happen to know that they do have declining enrollments, particularly in their elementary schools, they, you know, noticed.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, it's a different concept, right? If we're actually attracting more students, but there just are fewer, so than the opposite.
Yeah, so what I was planning to do is reach out to them, to the different ones that are sending and ask, I was, wanna go back three, I'd like to go back four years because, you know, the COVID year and the year after COVID are kind of weird anyway. So go back like four years and ask, I can, I can get that information, sure then just email it in. We did that with Lyme when we were having a lot, the discussions with Lyme about tuition rates. So we had gone back and looked at what our percentages were from their classes, and they've been maintaining, you know, pretty steady numbers. So, yeah, so I'm sure Act forty-six had some impact on us, right? But that would not be the reason why Heartland would be down. I know Sharon, Stratford, and one of the other ones, I know the guidance counselors had made mention that it would be nice if we could send a bus through there, but, you know, there's only so many hours. People don't want to get on a bus at six thirty, and I don't know how we're gonna do a quick loop from the Heartland all the way out to Sharon's stuff.
So, yeah. Jay will be a bus driver.
I was just gonna say with the Norwich, Bedford Bridge, gonna be out for eighteen months. It's gonna be harder for Lyme Kids to go to Bedford Academy and Hanover with the, and the doctors.
A couple of things. One is, I just shared with Jamie and Jay, I had FY twenty-one data from the Vermont Agency of Education that lists all school districts and where tuitioning dollars are going. We've requested the data from AOE for the most up-to-date stuff. They just haven't gotten it. See what's left, but as soon as I get it, I'll share it with you. The second thing, and so I don't mean to bring yet more bad news from the state of Vermont. But I will, I will warn you, so just to back up a little bit, there was a Supreme Court case in the state of Maine over the summer that was decided, and it had to do with public monies going to religious institutions. There was a recent advisory memo that Jay received from Dan French, Secretary of Education in the state of Vermont, that basically said, so Vermont has a compelled support clause in our constitution. Basically, we're, you know, we are not compelled to send our tax dollars to support religious institutions. Our own AOE has said that that is not, you cannot use that excuse to not send public tuition money in Vermont to an independent or a private school. So what they're saying is, is for those school districts that are now looking at parents that are asking to send their kids to a religious school in, in or outside of the state of Vermont, you can no longer say no. They're, they're coaching, advising school districts that you need to let that money go. What that means is for a place like Heartland, which may have had a lot of students, that now opens up additional possibilities for those kids to go to other institutions other than Hanover High. So that may be one of the reasons why we would see a decline here in Hanover. But more broadly, you're going to see now potentially a whole group of schools open up for these tuition students that did not previously exist, and it's gonna take them away from the places that they might have been going previously.
Great. Any other comments?
This is a big, just a, off the top of my head, I'm wondering, at one point, it might behoove us to revisit the notion of agreements with some of these sending, no, okay, I'm seeing you shaking your head. Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so I'm seeing yeses and no's, so not a question for now, just a general comment that clearly requires more. So not a question for now, just a general comment that clearly requires more thought and conversation.
And, okay, just one last comment. I've, I guess I'm less worried about Heartland because there's five ninth graders, but the others, the other towns don't have any ninth graders. And to me, that's a little more disturbing that we have 11th and 12th graders from Brownsville, but no ninth and 10th graders. And so I would be more curious about why we're not getting the people for all four years. Whereas Heartland, if that's five ninth graders feels healthy somehow, so.
Some of that's Act 46.
But again, I just feel like if we can, if we can concentrate on maybe the middle, like the, you know, the seventh and eighth grade years, it ensures four years of tuition. Because once they're at the Blue Ribbon School, they'll stay.
So, thank you. And I just want to reiterate that, I hope everyone heard, that Kim is watching a school board meeting.
Yes.
Want to make sure that's in the minutes.
I wasn't proud to say.
With the name, right, with the name.
Everyone would guess.
I apparently walk with the Heartland school board.
I was going to wait till our minutes approval. But if you look at the minutes for, that we're going to approve in a few minutes, it actually does have sort of comment by comment from all board members. So it really depends on who the note taker is. So if we ever want to have a discussion about the proper way or not properly doing it as we can, but we, at this meeting, we do have person by person minutes.
So moving on to Black River Innovation Campus. Is someone presenting on this or?
They won. And so they got money for winning and we're hoping that we can accept that money.
Great. Well, congratulations to the band.
Yay, band.
And my company is located at the Black River Innovation Campus. We, we're not affiliated with them. We work out of their space, so they're a great organization down in Springfield. So thank you to Black River Innovation Campus for putting this competition on. And congratulations to Hanover for getting second place and a check for $1,500. So would someone like, any, yeah, that'll be in the, any comments or questions about that? So then moving on to NHSBA resolutions. So we did this at Hanover two weeks ago and I think it kind of worked fine because there's a lot of stuff to go through. So would you guys send Norwich, take a look at the resolutions? No, you're not. We wouldn't. You didn't even look at it, did you?
Did you look at the Vermont ones?
Yes, I did.
Did you all discuss?
All right, all right. I have a suggestion.
Yes.
I get, because I represent two boards, they give me two pieces of paper. And I feel incredibly bold when I hold both of them up at the same time. So what I would like to suggest is that I...
Right hand and left hand.
What I would like to suggest is that I tell you what the Hanover board decided on each of the eight resolutions. And then if you have trouble with one of them, we can come back and discuss it and try to persuade you so that I don't look like an idiot going all those saying yes and those saying no. Okay, how's that sound? So the, the first issue, we agreed to the alternative language. The Rariman School Board had a proposal and we were fine with the, the alternative language relative to the issue of quorums and number of people present. The second one, we got a little bit, I, I think it's fair to say we were feeling a little bit like we wanted to push back against the NHSBA just sort of dismissing some of the other members' proposals. So while the second one was not supported by the NHSBA, we agreed unanimously that we wanted to support unvalued. The third one about dues, we agreed unanimously to a no, not support. The fourth one about food insecurity, again, we supported dairy cooperative school districts proposed resolution. The fifth one, which was about funding, Kim made the important point that when resolutions do not include funding, it's problematic. And we agreed with this and they did support it with alternative language, but we spent a bit of time talking about just the whole downshifting of funds. So we support that one. Number six.
Sorry, can I just, Deb, on that last one, number five, sorry, you support the alternate language or you support the original language?
I think we supported the alternate language. Yeah, I'm trying to read my notes here. And then six, we, we, oh gosh.
Deb, I can help you to another look at the actual minutes.
Oh, thank you.
This was a discussion, again, like some of the other ones where NHSBA said not to support because they already have something on the books. And we noted this was on the books from 2010.
Thank you.
And so we're like, this needs to be brought back up to the top of the list again. So they're turning over five. So, number six. Several of them, they kept on saying, we already have a resolution out there from 2019 or 2015. We were like, yeah, but apparently the resolution has not resonated. So we thought re-energizing it by having it supported would go a long way.
And for number six, it was nuanced enough that we actually moved to authorize our rep to vote after hearing the discussion at the meeting.
And then, surprise, seven and eight are our resolutions and we voted unanimously to support them. And in addition, I think Kelly made a motion, but Ben can correct me, to give me the authority to vote on any issue and see if that comes before the meeting.
Correct. And all of our votes were all of these motions for all the ways.
Any comments or questions? Great. So we're going to move on to...
You're really going to like it. So I was watching the Lebanon school boards and they supported our, our motions.
Yes, they did.
So we sent out letters requesting school boards in our area to support our resolutions. I don't know, maybe they got brought up, but that's a good sign, so.
That's great. Thanks for watching us. Thank you. I was at another...
I met at a YouTube meeting, so I couldn't attend, but I was, thank you. That was good to know.
So moving on to business requiring action. Would someone like to make a consent motion for items B, C, D, E, and F by consent? Yeah. Here, are you voting on this?
Actually, again, so.
Can you just raise our hands, all in support of the approving of the motion unanimous? Great. Okay, now moving on to item G, NHSBA resolutions. We watch for this one by one, right? So I'll call up the resolutions. Okay, trying to remember the language of how we would answer.
The Hanover school board?
Yeah.
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 So can I have a motion along that lines?
Would it be just for clarification before I make a motion, something like, move to approve the Hanover officials? Recommendations at Dresden Board as well?
Move to vote in concert with the Hanover School Board regarding...
Say that again.
Move to vote in concert with the Hanover School Board.
Neil's got a issue. No, I mean, it's just, I think for clarity's sake, I would say something along the lines of move to authorize our voting delegate to cast votes in accordance with the presentation that she gave at this evening's Dresden meeting and further to authorize the voting delegate to vote on any subsequent matters that might be brought before the delegate is...
I second what you're saying.
What did Neil say?
I can't repeat it, but I second what you're saying.
So moved. He said the right thing.
So moved.
So moved.
It's in the minutes.
So all in favor of approving Neil's motion unanimous? Any opposed? This extension is not... Okay.
It only takes 12 years to be able to develop that. Just let it come.
It was like a sonnet.
So report of the chair, so Deb is going down, when is it next week?
It's, it's a week from Saturday.
A week from Saturday.
First or second of October, whatever day that is.
And I'm sure Kim will be watching it on... Not, not this Saturday.
That's a Saturday, I need to...
That's, I, I thought I said a week from, wait.
It said the first or second.
Yeah.
This one coming up.
Is anything I come, I arrive early, so, okay, I won't miss it. I won't miss it.
So the only other comment I, or question I have is, so I don't know if you've all been seeing the reports of Chetna Olden's candy colored and it's starting to sweep through schools. I don't, I don't think we have a problem yet, but I would love to have people from Norwich Police Department. Or not Norwich, Hanover Police. Just live in Norwich, I meant Hanover. Hanover Police Department, at some future board meeting, just talk about what they're seeing, what maybe, you know, some information for parents and for kids too, that we could then pass out and make an invitation.
I've seen the counterargument to that, that it's not actually a thing, but I'll so sit there.
Oh, okay. It was on NBC last night, so.
I see your trust committee.
It was on the Norwich list, so.
That's always true.
Exactly.
Committee reports?
Oh, yeah, moving on to committee reports.
So I wanted to report that we had a Hanover Finance Committee. It's all the time, but for those terrifying, there should be a Dresden Finance Committee that consists of members of the Hanover Finance Committee and the Norwich Finance Committee. But without a Norwich Finance Committee, the Hanover Finance Committee acts in absentia basically, or acts as if the Dresden Finance Committee. And this is a, members of the public, of which there are select board members, one select board member and one school board member, which I am your liaison to that. And so we meet once a month to talk about finances for the town and schools. And at the last month's meeting, I thought, so actually Neil actually presented to the Hanover Finance Committee a couple of months ago about the Vermont waiting study because as we know, Dresden is part, part of this. And at last month's meeting, that kind of just kind of kick off the conversation of now that the Finance Committee had time to absorb it, kind of say, okay, what do you think? Is your initial reaction to this? And we clarified that the impact wouldn't be until, you know, not this budget cycle, but next year's budget cycle. And we had, you know, spreadsheets and good discussion and, you know, just make sure that they were fully up to speed. But I think the, really what we're asking for is just general direction. What kind of community do you want to live in giving this information? And I tried to, you know, we, we tried to separate, even though they are all Hanover members and obviously people have different opinions and there's only five members of the public and they're all Hanover residents, but we asked them first, you know, let's, you know, assume you're a Norwich member and here's your average profile. What do you think of this information? And now put your hat back on, wire your hand over, what do you think? And, you know, just to kind of give us initial, you know, reaction on what do we do? And I know this is just the start and it's not the end all be all, but I do want to report that the Finance Committee in both sets, really obviously they had difference in nuances in each hat that they were wearing. But they both said, you know, we, this Norwich and Hanover are both communities that really support our schools and that we would not anticipate changing significantly our programs that we currently offer. Now, do something new, maybe not the right time. Do something additional, more, that kind of a thing, I think was the kind of general theme. And of course, each member had a different flavor to that. But I think just, and why, you know, kind of asking for start of the reaction now is because what do we do with this information, right? Not great. This is not a favorable announcement, right? I mean, I guess, you know, it is if you think the big picture, but as far as tax bills come out and, you know, I chair all of the budget committees, I want to try to figure out, well, what do we do with next year's budget and what kind of direction should we be leaning toward? And how do we react to this information? And so this is just part of it. I think one of the other pieces of feedback is, you know, the general sense of we really support our schools, but also we need to get the message out and just have it not be a surprise. We think that there would be support, but let's not have it be a surprise. And so that's just one opinion. I'm sure others can disagree, but at least I took it away as helpful, you know, kind of market testing for what should we do with this year's budget as well. So happy to go into more detail, but I was trying to kind of give you the general flavor of that.
Any other committee reports?
Policy committee met this morning, where all the schools are starting up again and going back to our every other schedule. Let's see if any of them, when it comes to high school, they're going to do a 20-year schedule. Prepare yourselves.
Any other cases?
All right. Let's see, we have one minute before the meeting's supposed to begin. Off to a great start, so thank you to our principals, teachers, and all of our support staff. The feeling is a lot different, though I know we're still hearing about cases of COVID. So we know, we know we still have to be on our toes, but it just feels better, different this year. There are a lot of things that we're bringing to conclusion that we started over the course of the past few years, one of which is our evaluation committee. We met with the HEA representatives this afternoon to finalize our, our evaluation system and believe that they'll put that to a vote and I have every, every belief that they'll pass it and will have completed that important task that commenced when we negotiated a contract two cycles ago. Strategic planning is restarting. At least on Rep, for example, today, just briefly to kind of clarify the task that is ahead for the subcommittees. We'll be planning a public meeting to share results of the big survey that Ben kindly helped us with. Also to go over where we stand right now with the portrait of a graduate. And then we anticipate also, maybe we have some news to share about an equity policy and tie everything together for one big chance from one last round of public input before we put these things in final form. And I'm really excited about that. That'll give us a pathway forward for the next five years and a lot more guidance than we have. And aside from that, I have sad news to share, if you're not already aware, but our principal at Marion Cross School, Sean Gania, lost his father this week after a hard fought battle with an illness. And my condolences, I'm sure all of ours go out to him and his family.
Any comments or questions for Jay? Robert?
Hey, I will give you a brief COVID update. Fortunately, we have been still seeing very minor numbers of cases at the elementary middle school. Last week, I've been asking about nurses stuff, they need care periodically. So we see how things are going, but we've been in the low standard budgets at all of our schools, except for the high school. And we had increasing numbers last week, so, yeah. But still not as high as what we saw last year. So we started talking about, like, last week, sending out an update just advising parents again, to tell them that, well, protocols, so we've been working on that open for two days. So we'll hopefully send something out about it this week. I know there have been questions about that. And it is really confusing and I've relied tremendously on the nurses because with the changes over the past few years, just in terms of, you know, one symptom being how many days, when that starts, it has changed over time. So I, we have felt like it's been more effective when the nurses stop. So I, we have felt like it's been more effective when the nurses stop with parents and guardians, one on one, just relay that information because it is very confusing. So that's the COVID update. We've also been trying to work on curriculum, but again, we had two days scheduled this week and we just have not been able to get the subs that we need to cover classes. It's just been a struggle this year and struggled last year, but I feel like this year it's almost worse for us. And because we're seeing, you know, we aren't seeing some public cases, but we're seeing a lot of other illnesses like colds again. And a respiratory thing, so that has an impact as well, so. We're just, we have some outlook and hope that we will be able to get in some of the COVID days, but because we were not able to this week, I was able to substitute for Sean at Marion Cross. And go back to my former days of being elementary principal, so wonderful. So there was a, you know, separate line to not being able to have our curriculum days. We're continuing with the math training. We trained the middle and high school teachers last week in illustrative math TV. And so they could have some background for the teachers who are not using illustrative math, they could see what was happening at the elementary schools. And I'm happy to report I've been able to sit in on many math lessons since we implemented the program. And I'm seeing some really wonderful things, higher order thinking, a lot of interactive activities, really high engagement levels for kids. And doing really high level mathematics, even, you know, first, second, third, fourth, fifth grade, I'm really impressed with what I've been seeing, so. And I've just been trying to keep updated from the teachers on how they're feeling with programs going. And that was actually one of the things we were going to do with our curriculum work is just try to bring some of the pieces together because it is a lot of difficult work taking out of new curriculum. And with this one, there are so many different pieces to it, so teachers have had questions about doing math activities and centers and things like that. So hopefully we'll be able to address that more outside of just the PD. And finally, I've been continuing to work on the evaluation documents and all of the PV documents that go with that. That's been a work in process, but I feel like we're making so much progress in that area too. And we've gotten every school trained now in doing the PGP, Professional Work Plan Online, online system, which is a really big undertaking. I mean, I have no idea what an undertaking it would be when I started it, but I think that's going pretty well and the principals are seeing the results of that as we progress through the year. And then finally, the title grants, I've been spending much more time on that. I've been able to this year, of course, now that schools started again, it's super busy, so I fit it in when I can. But we're working on getting some PV around the coaching that we've been talking about with the evaluation system. So I'm working on one day programs. We sent a few people to Kansas this summer and then also looking at bringing someone in to do a much harder training. So that's it.
If you have any comments or questions for Robin?
Sorry, it's not even a hard curriculum. Are tests still available?
Yes. I actually, I picked some up for the New Hampshire schools two weeks ago, just so we have tests on hand and I know we said that many of them are for the cross school. So they are. Yeah, we, I just brought a hundred over there two weeks ago.
When parents just do this call in sick, do we ask if it's a public related or if it's not volunteered, do we ask them, is it a legal?
You know, I'm, at the high school, I think it depends on the person that they speak with, but often if they're speaking to the nurse, the nurses really fire that, whether it's public related.
I know at least at the elementary school, it's, we don't actually tell the nurse directly, it's reported to the principal and the student down office. And it's like not specifically required, but is it a legal related, just whatever the parent says. Just want to make sure it's actually tracked.
We defer, we defer to the nurse. Because it's a, it's a whole other issue, so the nurse actually doesn't tell me anything, they just say, the student is out and we'll be out for a while.
So when I check, I always check with the nurses because they have the first hand.
They have the most of the information.
Garrett?
Yeah, I mean, you guys, somebody, I just think that I haven't communicated with Robin, so I appreciate, I think, it sounds like we have something in place. Clear direction on the website, because I, I'm telling you, I mean, I, maybe I'm just happen to be bad luck, but the 10 people I talked to, we all have COVID. Everyone's like, what do we do? What are we supposed to do? Where are the guidelines? I know that the teachers or the principals sent out emails with some nurses notes back in August, but I don't think anyone has those anymore. And then they're digging through the website. Typically, people are going right to the school website. And then they're digging through the CDC data. And then the nurses, I know, I mean, I got a call from the nurse and I'll be honest with you guys, the nurses are giving different information out to everybody. It's not their fault. I think it's just that they're also just overwhelmed. So I, I think Robin's on board with this, but I mean, we have so many experts based on our past couple of years here. I really do think it would take like half an hour to distill down a clear list of, you know, what happens when a kid tests positive as a student and what happens when a family member tests positive. You know, you do these things, lay it right out. Dude, they're just confused, they know what to do. And then we're making unforced errors, right? We're sending kids who, you know, have had close contact or putting them on the bus in the morning, right? Like, I see that happening. I know there's parents that just tested positive and I watched your kid get on the bus without a mask, right? Like, these things are super easy. We know what works and what doesn't work with COVID. And it's going away, but I think it's going to be getting worse for a while.
Thank you, Garrett. Kelly?
I was gonna say, I, so just echoing a little bit like Garrett said, I think it feels like the numbers are higher than what you're saying. I think that's probably because they're spread out over different schools or, you know, the last seven days, so maybe not. I don't, I have heard too from community members, it might be helpful to know when we are seeing just a general rise. So that parents who, I don't, I don't, I think we're past the mandatory masking phase of things, but I think families might appreciate, you know, in a principal update or something, just we are seeing a little increase. If you are, if you have someone in your family who is more sensitive, is, you know, you might want to consider being more cautious this week. I think that might be helpful. And I will, I asked my son if I could share, but he has COVID right now. And I'm one of those parents who went, oh gosh, what am I supposed to do? And I'll just say, I didn't necessarily drive everything right, right away, because it was over the weekend. And I certainly don't expect anyone to be responding to me over the weekend, but it was this moment of I can't reach anybody and I don't know what to do. And here we are Monday morning, what do I do with my other child, right, who's fully vaccinated and what does that mean? So, yeah, so.
So we are working on something and hopefully it will be very soon to arrive, so.
Anecdotally, the number of masks in schools has gone significantly this week.
Not surprising.
I think, I think what would be helpful is, and I know we've discussed this in Hanover School District, so I don't know if we also said in Dresden, so about, this was last year, right? So New Hampshire, which is what, Hanover High School and which, you know, passed a, you know, law that says you can't mandate masks in schools. So I just, I do want us to understand that that's the law. So even if you think, oh, your, the policy can't say the sibling has to wear a mask if the, you know, the other sibling's sick, like, we can't require that. So I, I also want to make sure we under, we all have an understanding what the law is, so that maybe when you see the condensed policy, it makes sense too. So I also want to make sure we're clear on following on some things.
We still, we still have plenty of supplies available. I mean, Matt emailed me today and said, you know, there was an uptick in schools asking for supplies. And we have both supplies. We have blue masks, we have, you know, can on eyes. We've got.
I picked up a whole truckload last year and we are well stocked still, so.
We're well stocked still going into this fall, so, you know, if students are wanting masks, it should be able to go to the principal's office or.
Garrett?
Well, I was just gonna say, I mean, to Kim's point, I mean, I don't want to get derailed by New Hampshire, right? I mean, I'm not saying in this thing that we have to. We recommend and tell people that if you're, you know, for example, I mean, our kids are back at school, our other two siblings are back at school and they're wearing masks, right? That we're not requiring them, we're not forcing them, and I'm not asking someone from the New Hampshire State Legislature to file a complaint. But on our website, we should say that we are recommending that if you have a household member that you wear a mask for the next 10 days, right? This is, I think our community is going to do that for 95%, so I think we just need to, we don't need to get all spun up about New Hampshire and all the legislatures there and what they've done. I don't think that's relevant. I think we just make recommendations. That's all people want. So I'm not talking about mandating anything, just to be crystal clear, right?
Thank you.
So because I know not everybody follows the CDC maps as closely as Ben and I probably do. It might even be useful to have something like your fire risk color, just for parents to reference, which can be distilled out of all the various CDC maps that are out and updated. But it would be useful for me to know, I mean, I hear second or third hands, I have a kid in each school and I, I know which of those classmates tested positive, one and was in the car with my kid or on the bus with my kid or whatever, but that's only my children's rules. And if I could know as a larger school, I think school by school probably what the risk is, it would be a little more helpful to me. And you could even do it as a percentage of student population, you know.
And I can tell you right now, last week, it literally was low single digits, we did not have above six. And many of our schools other than that high schools.
But having some sort of marker would allow the parents who still care to, you know, make their kids wear masks in and allow the parents who don't want to think about it to continue not to think about it. That's fine. I'd like to have the option of thinking about it.
And the nice thing about that is it allows you not to rely on your children to give you the information.
They're 100% accurate.
That's the one thing, I mean, I pulled the administration this too, that keep forgetting that the parents do talk, which other kids talk, and I also heard anecdotally that this seems like the highest it's ever been in terms of people we know around the community happen. So I find these numbers dubious, not on your side, but more that there's dramatic under reporting going on. Or there's some sort of disconnect between what we're officially told, which is what we're hearing.
Right.
Yeah, totally, at least at the middle school, there's, people are much freer with the information than they were. That's what I'm saying, like, we're still, we're still following all those HIPAA regulations, like, we can't ask if you have COVID or not, because at the beginning there was huge stigma involved with if people actually tested positive. Now there's no stigma. So I think there are people, all kinds of people who are saying, yeah, I had it. The other thing that we do have is a lot of people are just sick. Like, I had the same thing. I tested, I was like, come on, how can I not be positive for five straight days? I couldn't read, I couldn't talk. I didn't have, I had some, just a really bad respiratory. I wore a mask because I was coughing. But, you know, so we do have, we have a number of people who are out. But I, and I think that there are some who are like, it doesn't matter whether they're positive or not, I'm keeping them home because they can't read. But we'll try, I mean, we'll try to get all that more information out there.
Thank you.
Jamie?
Oh, yeah.
Fast and Furious.
Mask on.
Why is it way over here?
I had to say that's 91 year old, about nine times today, on a little trip to the doctor. Mask on, Lucy. So I updated the unaudited surplus projection from the 630. And I shared all the stuff again with everybody. There wasn't a lot of changes, there was some changes. And I just had a revelation moment, so this will make me happy. Sometimes when I put these reports together, I have to look through them after I'm done and go, oh, wait a minute, I didn't make that. So the fund balance coming off of 21 is $700,000, right? And so the fund balance projected unassigned surplus I'm showing you at the bottom does not include that $700,000, because that's an operational fund balance, alright? So, sorry, sometimes I just have to look at, I can go, wait a minute, we have more money than that. Because I don't ever include the fund balance that we're carrying off of the operationist. So we'll have a projected unassigned surplus, I'm saying of 749,168, alright? So we will have enough. I have a long, I think it's enough, but we'll have enough to offset the tuition issue. And we'll have enough to retain, so, and then we'll have to make a decision on what we want to retain at the October meeting. Alright, so start thinking about that. And I will have early audited numbers, if there's any adjustments to that figure, by that meeting. So we'll have a good idea of exactly what we have available to either, you know, to retain from that. Because I believe Dresden, we can go up to 5% on, yeah.
On the New Hampshire side?
Yeah, on the New Hampshire, yeah.
70% of them.
So, so that's good. Take a look at that. If you have any questions on it, let me know. We did file all the documents for the, for the loan, for both the baseball field and the track. So the documents are in place, the loan is in place. We've not drawn any money off of it in down intention until any other projects break ground, which is great, it's going to save us a ton of interest that we won't have to pay for this year's budget. Right now, we're just carrying any of the engineering costs. We met with the Town of Norwich Development Review Board on the baseball field. It seems to have gone well. We have gotten through most all of the permitting process to this point and have administrative reviews. The last one we have to get through over there besides the Town of Norwich, which I don't expect we're gonna have a problem, they all seemed very receptive to it. Is at 250, the building part of the permit. But again, there's new people in place and, but we still think it's going to be administrative review, so it should go pretty smoothly. Once we have permit in hand from Norwich, we will be sending out the RFPs for the baseball field. We have a renowned designer working with us with our end name, so it should be really great. We've also spoken with the field hockey coach, because field hockey also uses that field for their, for their grass practices. And they're very happy to hear that the big crown in the middle of the field will go away, okay? So that's good news. And don't worry, they're not super expensive. People who are helping us make sure the design is good for the drainage. The track, we are doing, the boring samples came back. It's as we had expected, it's a mixture of not very good sand and soils and hard pack underneath. We are doing, we'll see surveyors out there in the very near future to survey the property lines between us and the neighbors, because there's a little encouragement going on, but that's a challenge, we'll work it out. We'll have to, we'll have to cut some trees down for that project in the very back because of the shade that's coming off of them, which has actually presented issues for many years. So that's moving forward. Between middle school, we should be embarking on getting that pavilion underway here shortly. I've had a couple of other light bulb moments to say on how we can move that project along quicker. What else is going on? What other projects? Internal, this is internal projects, it's the line AJ indoors and normal maintenance stuff. We're embarking on the audit for the facilities condition audit. Our first meeting kickoff is, what's the one, why did I say Thursday? So Tony and Matt, our facilities folks in the office down here, have been gathering all kinds of documents that have been asked for and historical documents, so that'll be well underway. We expect to have that completed, although I haven't seen the timeline. We expect to have that completed, although I haven't seen the timeline, but based on what they told us. And the good news here, folks, is that the state of Vermont just contracted with the same company to do school, to do, to do early, and I don't think they're as in-depth as what we're looking at, but some type of informational gathering of those in Vermont. So I am going to follow up with them and ask them to give a little credit there somehow, or Vermont will reimburse us for a portion of what they were spent to do north. So that's, that feels good, that we, I think we chose the right time. I think that's it in my world, other than this is Dresden, right?
Any questions for Jamie? You started, sorry, you started to save the timeline, I think it's about two minutes, sorry.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, 60 days.
Yeah, so before Christmas?
I, I am hoping that we will have all of the results prior to, I'd love to have it Friday, December 7th, but that might be pushing it just a little bit, because that's when we're going to send out our books.
So this is for the high school food service?
Yes.
Report, so, and I'm kind of also looking a little bit ahead, but do we, do we provide, so I heard a rumor that we provide, or that, sorry, Cafe Services uses our facilities in, at the high school to provide food for crossroads, basically they just use space to.
And Norwich.
And, and Norwich, yes. In our contract with Cafe Services, do we receive any sort of benefit for using the space? I say that because I was watching a Lime School Board meeting and they were, hey, knowledge is power. Watching a Lime School Board meeting and they were, Cafe Services was pitching to be their food service provider and they were considering it in the, they were actually going to move the business from here to Lime. And I was thinking, I don't even know, and that they were offering a discount so, because they could do, they could basically use the Lime facilities instead of here. And then I was thinking, I don't even know if we get benefit from that.
We do have benefit from that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we do. I say that because our, our food service at the high school is not doing as well, right? Than the middle school, so as far as our budget. Not operational, I just meant from the primary school report.
The financial report, the number that, the transfer that you're looking at was for $300,000?
Yes, but we're still at it.
Okay. No issue, no, we, and we, there's a, there's, so I know, because I've seen the early audits, we ended with a surplus at the high school.
Okay, great. So that, because that was going to be my next question.
Yeah, I believe there's a surplus at the high school, it's a small, because it was an adjustment made to the revenue. And we also ended up with a surplus, we haven't booked the audit, general entries, because they're in review right now. There's also a surplus at Richard Mill's school.
And then I'll just say that maybe going forward, we might not receive that benefit.
I said it's going to go up.
Well, I meant, I meant, I meant the crossroads business.
Oh, yeah.
Because I think that's probably going to go to Lime, because they're looking at Cafe Services.
Which, which I know, so I don't think that will totally negatively impact us, because I think it's going to take some, some stress off of.
Any other comments or questions for Jamie? So at this point, you mentioned there was another topic, is that a personnel topic also? For non-public?
Non-public.
Well, there's already one on here for personnel, is there another one?
Hmm, that's probably, that was the last.
So would someone like to make a motion to move this in non-public?
Move to enter into non-public session at 8:57 PM, under RSA 91-832-C personnel.
Second, Ben?
That's right, yes. Kurt Minnias?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, yes.
Timmy, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Kristy, yes.
Nelson, yes.
Carrie, yes.
Nicole, yes.
Here?
Okay. Yeah, sorry, before we go, no, there was, I mentioned that we have an ESOL need that we wanted to add, non-public.
So what is that?
It's adding, it's asking for an increase in FTE.
Oh, okay, so it's.
Okay.
Okay. Great. If you refresh the board docs, there's new language in there.
We did it right then, I was just hitting save, so Mary and I did it.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the, uh, ESOL increase? Someone wanna make a motion?
Sorry, I'm refreshing.
Me too.
I don't think there's enough motion for that.
Okay. Neil can correct. Move to approve the ESOL point two increase as presented, not a person thing.
Right, the second? Twenty second, uh, all in favor, raise your hand.
Well.
It doesn't get to the.
Actually.
Jim, you had a question.
Well, okay.
What's that?
It's, I, is it point one seven FTE? I said point two. Sorry. We're rounding up.
Point one seven FTE. I'm in my mode.
Should be point two. Okay, it says, it's in the email, that's right.
Okay. Uh, moving on to the motion regarding early retirements. Someone wanna make a motion?
Is it just what it's written?
Yeah.
Move to approve the HGA memorandum of agreement regarding early retirement as presented.
Tony? All in favor of approving the motion, say, raise your hand? Any opposed? Any exceptions? And, moving on, uh, please get me your topics for the next meeting, which will be scheduled for Tuesday, October 25th. At this point, do I have a motion to adjourn?